Uh?
Can I press?
Yeah.
Mr. Gray Eyes, can you hear me? All right, hold on.
Tomorrow is our, um, breakfast or Georgia O'Keeffe Day.
Oh.
From nine to ten. It's on that geological landscape of where she painted.
She set the alarm, so they play up the alarm going off?
Yeah. Hopefully a good idea.
Okay, be just a second while we're trying to get commissioners on here. So, hold tight.
Thanks, Mac.
There you are.
Okay, I got you in now. Still waiting for Commissioner Mary Boye. So, we're almost there.
My, uh, my equipment is kind of slow, so.
Okay. Sometimes when it gets slow, if you turn that video off. Hmm. Okay. Well, yeah.
Mac says, uh, people are waiting to get into the room or something like that.
I have everybody admitted to the room.
Okay. Fine, thank you.
Then I sent a text to Commissioner Mary Boye with the number. Let's see. He says he's on. Where? Just started. Hmm? I don't know. It's ridiculous. Yeah, he says he's there, I can't see him. Commissioner Mary Boye, are you here? I'm not seeing your number.
Uh, wait, did you get my stamp?
Yes, yes, it came in the mail last week.
Oh, all right.
Hopefully we'll be able to.
I don't have to lift my finger. Yeah.
We'll be able to use it this week.
Looks like, uh, Mr. Adams is doing fine.
He looks like he's doing fine.
Yeah. Looks real cool.
Okay, so it looks like the phone number in here is Commissioner Mary Boye. Commissioner Mary Boye, we can't hear you on here.
Maybe he has his phone muted, you should tell him to do star six.
It's not showing that he's muted. Who's?
Oh.
I don't know, Commissioner Gray Eyes, he says he's in a room, but I can't see him on here. So, I think he's in a different. Different Zoom conference room. Hello?
Hi, you have these people located, unfortunately are not available.
No one's popped up in our waiting room yet. Mr. Adair entered the room, so we'll turn the time over to him to know, we're just waiting for Commissioner Mary Boye to get on.
Mr. Mary Boye's on.
Yeah.
Whatever, will you just go ahead and do the preliminary coverage?
It's like he's popping in right now.
Yeah.
So, he should be live now, okay, good, got him. Can you hear us, Commissioner Mary Boye?
I, I'm here now.
Thank you, perfect. Hey, we're ready to begin, it is eleven nineteen, sorry about the delay, everyone, who's been patiently waiting, so. As we have this luxurious opportunity to be on the internet and try these electronic meetings. Can't wait to where we can all be in person again. Okay, Commissioner Gray Eyes, it's all you, take it away, eleven nineteen.
Okay, uh, I will go ahead and. So, I have the agenda right in front of me, but.
What was that, Mac?
We're just getting everything situated here.
I had it up. Uh, the agenda's on. Oh, here it is. Okay.
If you want, on the call to order, let me start going down through these. As far as the call to order, let me describe who's here. We've got Commissioner Gray Eyes is on, um, the phone with choppy internet. And then got Commissioner Mary Boye on a conference call with about the same internet and connectivity rate. And then I've got Commissioner Adams, he's live in County Building. I've got Sean David live with us in the County Building, as well as TJ Adair, our Road Superintendent, live in the building as well. That kind of takes place of our calls of order. You got it? Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead and, uh, follow the meeting to order at, uh, eleven twenty-one. Now, uh, go ahead and take a roll call, uh, which I understand, uh, Mr. Adams is present. Mr. Mary Boye is present in my shell. So, with the accord is established invocation, we have any volunteer? Trey, Kenneth?
Uh-huh.
Sir President?
Okay, um, Mac, I guess I will render the, um, the invocation. And good morning, everybody, welcome to our commissioners meeting. And I will, uh, do a brief silent of moment. A moment of silence for those that we have lost. And, um, and a lot of us were still, uh, mourning for the loss of those loved ones. We have people all the way into the, uh, the state and the legislators, uh, besides our, our families and our loved ones. And like to, uh, take this time to do a moment of silence to remember those that have left us. So, with that, um, let's go into a moment of silence, give us about, uh, a minute, and then give me a heads up, Mac.
Should be pretty close right there. I must bend the.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the moment of silence, and, um, okay, back to you, Chairman.
Hey, public comment?
Hey, with the public comments, just as a reminder, we'll be timing you for three minutes each for each one of you wishing to make a public comment. If you are wanting to make a public comment, just raise your hand, there's a feature within the Zoom that you'll be able to, um, if you select your name, you'll be able to raise your hand on the chat feature. Um, if not, if I can see you and you wave a motion, I'll be able to catch you. Or if you unmute yourself, then we'll be able to take turns throughout, um, uh, hold on, let me get my timekeeper ready here. Uh, also, when we do turn it over to you, just be courteous and, um, kind with your comments and remarks. Um, and then also, um, if it does get out of hand, we will boot you or mute you, either one of those. Um, and then, let's see, also, just state your name and where you're located in San Juan County. Um, we do turn the time over to you. So, with that being said, let me see if there's any hands raised in the chat. I don't have any in the chat, I've got May wanting to make a public comment, go ahead and let.
Hi, am I on?
You are.
Okay, good morning, uh, Commissioners. I would like, uh, to welcome Commissioner Chairman Gray Eyes back to the meeting. And very pleased that you've recovered from COVID, that's just wonderful. Um, I have my comment written out here, if I can find it. Uh, just a moment here. Okay. Um, I'm Matt Clark from Spanish Valley, and I just wanted to make a, a brief, uh, comment about item number nine on today's agenda. That's calling for moving four, um, D category roads in Spanish Valley into the B category road. And, um, I appreciate the county providing more in, information in the packet than it did a couple of years ago. But nevertheless, there's still no map included by TJ Adair to show you where these roads are located within Spanish Valley. So, I hope he will have a map to show you there today when you discuss this. And, um, in particular, where is the four-wheel drive road? It's named four-wheel drive road, but that is supposed to be turning into a B road. So, just wondering about the location of that and also the budget before you vote on this. I'm wondering how much B road maintenance money that the county gets from the state? And whether that amount of money, um, is sufficient to cover these four new roads? And that, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, I've got Carolyn. Thanks for raising your hand, okay, Carolyn, hold on, let me get you. Go ahead, take it away.
Thank you, yeah, I finally figured out how to do that raise hand thing. Um, good morning, Commissioners. Uh, I'm probably not able to stay for the entire meeting, but I wanted to say how happy I am to, to see Chairman Gray Eyes back in the saddle. And I hope that he has had a full recovery. And since he was not at the last meeting, I'd like to call his attention to the fact that we have two very qualified applicants for the vacancies on the Spanish Valley Special Service District Water Board. I also would like to disagree with what Mr. Adams said at the last meeting. These are not just routine appointments, as he called them, and it should not be assumed that it is automatic for past members to be reappointed. This is an extremely important board that controls the water in Spanish Valley. And not only sets rates for local residents, but also approves water for new development and establishes general water policies. It is time for this board to have new blood and fresh ideas for facing the future critical water situation in Spanish Valley. This board should not only have members with pro-development interests, but also represent the local residents and homeowners who live there. Both Dave Ficardi and Monet Clark are very qualified long-term residents of Spanish Valley who are actively concerned about its future. By contrast to the others, they also have no potential conflict of interest whatsoever in serving on this board. Uh, Dave is a geologist with experience in hydrology and water wells and would bring this expertise, uh, to the board. Monet is very dedicated and knowledgeable about Spanish Valley issues and has technical writing and research skills that would be useful. If the Commissioners have any doubts about their qualifications, I encourage you to take the time to interview these candidates and ensure the best selections are made for a balanced representation of opinions on the board. And I asked Mr. McDonald to please, in the future, have a policy to include the applications of all candidates for important board vacancies in the packet of information for the Commissioners, so that they can easily see the available choices. Um, thank you for listening to my comments, and I hope you all have a good meeting. That's it. I didn't even use all my time.
Okay, we've got Doug Allen next.
Thank you, Commissioners. I just got a minor matter, but I brought it to Bruce Adams' attention the other day. That's, I see Amber Johnson's on the agenda for the BLM. The monolith that was in San Juan County was repossessed by the BLM or given to the BLM. I just wanted to propose the Commission's support on getting that to, instead of being sent to Moab in Grand County or Salt Lake or something like that. If we could get it at the Canyon Country Discovery Center, they could put it to good use as a tourist attraction and help get the visitation up at Canyon Country Discovery Center. So just ask for that support. I think the center would like to have that. I talked to them and they would like to have that.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, anyone else wishing to make a public comment? If so, go ahead and unmute yourself. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody unmute themselves, not seeing anybody motion or raise their hand on the chat. So Commissioners, that's your public comments for today.
Thank you. Question. The appointment of water issue, is that included today?
No, that's not included today. We'll talk offline about that one and try to figure out a process.
Like to make a motion?
Okay. All right. Motion is made to what?
To accept. To accept the comments.
Okay.
Into the record.
All right. So motion is made to accept the comments. Is there a second to the motion?
No.
Okay, Mr. Adams is second. Any question? There being none, all those who prefer, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Zero, three, zero. Pass. Thank you. Next is consent agenda.
Hey, I can go through all these on the consent agenda that you have for you today. The first one on here, you have the January 19, 2021 Commission meeting minutes. You'll notice that we have the public comments listed in there as well. Then we've got the check registers for the week of January 21 of 2021 through January 26 of 2021. In here, you have item number three is consideration and approval of the Fourth Amendment to the HIV Prevention Contract with the Utah Department of Health and San Juan County Public Health from 2018 for a total of $4,250. This is an increase of $500 to their contract. So just a small increase that will come from federal funds. So just an amendment to that one. The next one on here is a ratification of the 2021 Library Services and Technology Act Grant Contract with the State of Utah Department of Heritage and Arts for a total of $1,825 for eligible interlibrary loan costs. This is a grant that establishes a kind of a consortium that we can go and loan books from, from the OCLC World Share Platform. Kind of gives us an opportunity to expand our system and the request through Book Buzz, but it's a grant of that $1,825. That, Commissioners, is all that we have on the consent agenda item for you to approve today.
Any comment?
Like to make a motion for all the consideration under the consent item agenda, along with the minutes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Question, Mr. McDonald on Troy Brother Tribune. What's that?
That's our next item on the agenda. And so I'll cover that on item six. We're only up to item four on the consent agenda items.
Okay.
We have a motion that's made and then it was seconded, so motion by Commissioner Mary Boy, second from Commissioner Adams on the consent agenda items.
Okay. Other question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, two. Oppose, aye. Aye, three, aye, zero.
Okay, next on the agenda, you have your recognitions, presentations, and then informational items. This first item, number five, is a BLM quarterly, first quarterly update for 2021. We just wanted to bring Amber on so that she can kind of give us an update of where that and the things that the BLM are working on. Amber, you should be able to unmute before. There you go. So if you can't, Commissioner, we'd like to turn the time over to Amber for that.
Hey. Amber Johnson.
Good morning, everybody. I want to thank you for your time. And I am glad that Commissioner Gray Eyes has returned to health. I wasn't aware. And it is a little bit of a scary time. You'll see that I am working from my garage today. So thank you for the opportunity to meet virtually while we work through quarantining and et cetera. It is, it is a difficult time. We should be caught in that. So today, I want to take a few minutes, give a little. I'll address very quickly the monolith. That is still under an executive, I mean, an active investigation. And so that is part of evidence of that investigation. And it's in the hands of law enforcement as we speak. I've had requests for either reinstalling or putting it locations. The Canyon Country Discovery Center has approached us. And I have told everyone that we will, once the investigation is complete, then we will look at what we might do to dispose of that, or not dispose of it, to place that monolith at some point in the future. So there's that. So I wanted to very briefly touch on the, we, many of you have probably seen, we have some recent secretarial and executive orders that affect the BLM in this area. As of right now, we don't have any news on that. We are still working with our state office and our regional folks with the department to see how that applies and affects our local office. We will let you know as we know more. So right now, we're, we are following those executive orders and reviewing and responding to data calls. A few updates in the last month. I signed the author, well, the NEPA document, the environmental assessment for the Bluff River Trail, so we can start working on fundraising and implementation of that. So that's a very exciting thing that's been in the, in the process for a long time. We are, this week, hosting a customer service week with the BLM staff in our district, in Canyon Country District with Moab and Monticello, open to the public, answering questions, providing information about how the BLM interacts with the public, how different permits are approved. And so far, day two, going very well, 50 or so folks at any one meeting. And so that will go on throughout the rest of the week. We will be, we're looking at spring operations now. All of our campgrounds are currently open. We're looking at, we've had a huge interest, record interest in the San Juan River Lottery this year. So that is in process right now for launches on the San Juan River. Kangal tree ranger station will be reopening to provide visitor services on Cedar Mesa. We've had some staff vacancies that are, that are, we're getting filled now. We'll probably have that station open to the public in the mornings. And we'll be implementing COVID protocols to help keep our people in the public safe as we go through that. But anyway, those are in place. We also have a new option for Cedar Mesa fees that is all digital through rec.gov. So you don't actually have to put your fee in the fee station at the trailhead. You can do it online prior to going. So we call that digital day pass, and that's an exciting thing. For Bear's National Monument, we are working on appointments to the Monument Advisory Committee. We had four appointments made by the last administration. And we have another batch of six slots that are being considered as we speak for, that the new administration, the new secretary will put in. So we're looking forward to a meeting with the Monument Advisory Committee in March. And then I also wanted to give a quick update on the free woodcutting permit program that we did this last fall. We had unprecedented interest in that program. And just for example, in a normal year, 2019 was pretty average year. We gave out approximately 300 permits, which totaled about 834 cords of wood. In the fall of 2020, between September and December, we issued 1,273 permits at four cords each, which equals 5,092 cords. So that, we, we don't believe all of those permits have been fully utilized. We've had some people after they expired call, well, I never got out there, I need to get a new one. So we've been working for folks like that. A lot of people might have used one cord out of five. We don't know exactly how much. But what we have seen is that there has been an increase in off-road travel associated with wood gathering. And we wanted to bring this before the Commission to just give you a little bit of information about what we'll be doing over the next, the next few months. So we have been monitoring that. We want to balance the real need for access for fuel wood on BLM lands by the public with the need for resource protection. So what we often see is most, in a lot of the office, you can drive off the road within 150 feet of the road to gather wood, to park, to camp, all of those things. It's not illegal. Within our WSA areas, you have to stay on the road. We've seen a fairly large increase in incursions into those woodland areas. Some of that is related to wood gathering, others, it's related to increases in dispersed camping with recreational visitors. And if one car drives off the side of the road, it's not that big a deal. If another one follows it, very soon you start having, and then you start having new campsites. And you see this, this disturbance expanding over the, over the landscape. So what we'll be doing is we've, we've monitored, we have about 25 total miles throughout the field office of these, we call them vehicular or linear intrusions off the road. We will be rehabbing those. That will include some raking, some, you know, disguising with vegetation, that sort of thing. What we will not be doing is closing roads on our designated travel plan. So those will remain open. But you might see a park ranger out there putting to bed a new two-track that has sprung up over the last couple of years. The other thing that we are doing is we would like to partner with the county to improve our educational and outreach efforts for woodcutting and for recreation visitors. And we've had some initial discussions with the staff about what that might look like. We do not believe that anyone intentionally causes resource damage. Most of what we see is because people don't know. And so what we would like to do is improve that. We're also looking at putting together some partnerships with some universities and other partners, potential partners to study our woodlands and to get a better idea of what our current inventory is and what needs to happen long-term as far as managing that and have that be based on a science-based approach. And so we'd like to make sure that when we make areas open for fuel wood, that we're doing that in a, in a scientifically sustainable way, if that makes sense. That is all I had for today. But I do have, you know, if you have any questions or would like some clarifications, I'd be happy to take those.
Motion? Hello?
I can hear you. Hold on, Commissioner Gray Eyes is on mute. Commissioner Gray Eyes, so you're on mute on there. I tried to unmute you from my side, but it won't let me. There you go. Okay, everything should be good.
Can I pose a question? On Amber Johnson?
Sure, how can I help you?
Yes. I believe I heard Bear's Years National Monument appointment, March 21? Is that my understanding?
So for the Monument Advisory Committee, we had, last fall, we received applications for appointments to the Monument Advisory Committee. And so we're working through those and that new appointment process. The nominations that came in last spring were appointed.
Those have not been ready for. I was always ready to fight.
The, the appointments or the nominations that came in last spring, they have been. We have a whole nother batch of six going to be appointed by this administration. Did I answer that correctly? Is that what you were asking?
Those that were, letter of interest that were made, are they have been ratified for appointment?
Not the most, not the most current ones. We're working with this administration, the Sec, and those should be made up this spring.
I should have those details in your report. When will they be considered?
They are, they are being considered right now. And we, we hope that they will be appointed before the next MAC meeting in, in March. But the local office isn't in control of that schedule.
Okay. So the end of this month or next month?
We, we hope that they are by the end of next month, but we do not know yet when that will be. We're working with our state office and the government, and the Forest Service. We're working with our state office and the government, and the Forest Service to send those nominations up. Okay? Any other questions? I'll go off video.
Thank you, Amber.
Thank you very much for your time, everyone.
Okay, we did have a motion. Commissioner Murray Boy made a motion I believe to accept the presentation. Is that what?
Yeah.
Call for the question.
Okay, others in favor? Say aye.
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 Aye. Aye, none, three in favor, zero opposed?
Okay, your next item on the agenda, number, so we're on item number six. We have the Troy Butler tribute. This is, we just wanted to recognize and pay tribute to Troy Butler. Troy Butler was a former county sheriff. Many of you know him, I'm sure. But he retired here as a sheriff and then became our pilot, our airplane pilot. And so if you, within the past, I'm sure each of you had an opportunity to be flown by him, but I did want to just take a few moments and recognize him in memory of him, his service to the county. You know, it's unfortunate with his passing, but I felt that it was kind of a need for the county. We went out and purchased, one of the recommendations on the ritual was to purchase a tree in memory of him. I've gone ahead and have done that. So we purchased a tree that will be planted in partnership with the American Forests. They plant trees in all fifty states and within over a few percent of the national forests. And so just in tribute and honor of him, we felt that that was necessary as well as just to mention that we thank him and his family, his wife and his kids for their service and commitment to the county all these years.
Any motion?
No.
Like to make a motion?
What's the take on it?
Are you asking what the costs were for the?
Oh, no, no. What are, do, put it into a motion or not?
We have a we have a motion to accept.
Okay. Mr. Mary Boy motion to go ahead and extend recognition regarding Mr. Troy Butler tribute. There's a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. Any question? There have been none, others in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, oppose, aye? Who cares? Next would be business item.
Yeah, so so the next item on the agenda, commissioners, is the consideration and approval of the 2021 San Juan County Sheriff's Office Training and Clothing Reimbursement Contract. This presentation will be given by our sheriff, Sheriff Torrigan.
All right, thanks, Matt, commissioners. This was brought up probably a year ago when we were talking salaries for the deputies. And we gave a copy of this to the former HR, but never, it never went anywhere, so we're following up now to try to get this done, get it approved, and get it into the hiring packet. So when we hire deputies, this will be part of, you know, what this contract to be signed. I don't know if you had a chance to read over it, but basically this states that we, we spend about five thousand dollars in training costs in getting them up to post, providing transportation and food and wages. And so this contract would just be having them sign on that they'll agree to work, work for us for three years. Just so that we get, you know, something out of the money that we spend for training, the training costs. And that's what this, I think Matt sent it to Kendall. It's been reviewed by him. And so we'd just like to get that approved and put it in the training packet so that they sign that when they're hired.
Hey, do you want to hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Also, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Matt.
Yeah.
All the items that you have on the agenda right now, can you look and see which one they're almost a similar type of the items? Due to the fact that I know that our term is back and we really appreciate that, but I understand that people, they go through that, they, they really struggle with their, with their breathing, and I can sense that. So maybe we can have some of those items and be either double or triple, so we can motion those if they're almost identical items.
They're all separate agreements, but we only have four more left, so they'll go really fast.
That's okay.
Okay.
I'm always in there.
Okay. I made a motion?
Okay, on number seven?
On Torquesson's.
Is there a second?
I have a second with comment.
Go ahead, sir.
As I look through this, Sheriff, do we still require new recruits to stay with the office for a certain period of time with any kind of a penalty?
Yeah, so this contract will say that we'd like them to stay on for three years, and then the penalty will be each month less than the thirty-six months will be charged, you know, one six, one thirty-six of the total cost that we spent to get them trained. So that would be the penalty if they leave us before the three years is up.
All right, thanks.
I'd be a mom, bro.
Call for a question.
Others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, aye? There's none, three in favor, zero opposed? Motion passed. Number eight, sir.
And number eight, we've got, let's see here, consideration and approval of the community library enhancement grant. This will be provided by our Director of Library Systems, Nicole, Nicole, do you hear?
Yes.
Go ahead, take it away.
This is a grant that we usually receive each year. It's a CLEF grant, a community library enhancement fund that we, that comes through state funds and the state library, and this year it's for seven thousand four hundred dollars. And just seeking your approval to have that grant given. It will be used for collection development, technology for public use, and programming.
Motion? Is there a motion to?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a motion to accept or approve?
Second.
A second, so I'm a smear vote. Any question? Call for the question. Others in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, aye? Three in favor, zero opposed? Motion cares. Number nine?
Okay, number nine on here, you've got consideration and approval of adding D-roads in Spanish Valley to be road system for East Coronado, Beckler Court Four Wheel Drive Road, and Wildflower Circle? Circle. This one will be presented by TJ Adair, our road superintendent. And also, if you're online and can see, you can see the maps of all the streets that are available right there just off of Coronado. You'll see Wildflower Circle Four Wheel Drive and Beckler. All right off of there. Go ahead, TJ.
Yeah, so these roads were, they've been in there since the late nineties. They've come right off of East Coronado. When they did the water and sewer project, these roads were all chipped to bring their surface upgrade up. And so these roads are all, they were D-roads that have been brought to B-road standards. They're all deeded roads to San Juan County. We actually own every one of those roads. And so we just, with the surface upgrade, we'd like to put them on the B-road to get our funding since they're already done. So that's what we've got. They're the last ones, I believe, of the water and sewer project at Spanish Valley to be, needing to be upgraded.
Motion to approve, would be noted?
Motion to
Motion.
You got a hand, hand wrestle, arm wrestle right there.
Bruce motions, and I will second.
Okay. And Mr. Adams' motion, second by Mr. Mary Boy. Question? What, what's the difference in the cost to D-roads to B-roads?
It just all depends on what kind of upgrades that you need to make to take a D-road to a B-road, what the base needs, what the road base, any of that upgrade. This stuff was all part of that project, the water and sewer project, to chip those roads down there. Most of the roads that got ripped up just got put back. These got upgraded with part of the project, and so the money was part of that project. Now it'll just be the maintenance of them, which will use the B-road funds as soon as it's put on there to maintain those roads, just like the rest of Spanish Valley.
Thank you. Call for the question. Others in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, also, oppose, aye? Three in favor, zero opposed? Motion cares?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number ten, consideration and approval of the 2021 Fire Warden Pay Plan. This one here, we just thought we'd bring it to your attention. Last year, our amount that we had to contribute to this program was fifty-one thousand and eighty-one dollars. This year, it's gone up, sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. This is one of those, I just wanted to put this on your radar, that this ask from the county continues to increase every year. Not necessarily on the program support side, but on professional and technical. And so it seems like we've continued to increase our, our cost on here. This is a cost shared by the state for their costs as well. One of the things what this will do is, is it continues to increase, there's just more and more coordination with them. We're able to offset these costs throughout the year by programs and projects to mitigate fire here in San Juan County. And so it just means that we've got to make sure that we have more and more programs, more and more projects for the state wildland fire program so that we can offset these costs. And so this is an annual, annual approval that we go through.
Okay, gentlemen?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Question? Why did the cost escalate?
So the cost on there, if the state gives us salary increases, then we've, those costs trickle down through us and the state. That was one of them, as well as last year, they, we received a new fire warden in this area, and those costs reflect that different warden's salary. Yeah, hopefully we'll be able to stabilize our warden here. They've been, they've had a difficulty with throughout the state keeping long-term fire wardens.
Yeah. Okay. Call for the question. Others in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, also. Oppose, aye? None, three in favor, zero opposed? Motion cares? Next?
Okay, the last item on your agenda is number eleven, consideration and approval of the 2021 sponsorship agreement between San Juan County and Chadwick Booth and Company for seventeen thousand. This is a sole source contract. Last year, the contract was thirty thousand. Due to budget cuts, we decreased their amount to fifteen thousand. They're ready to go to work in behalf of the county. If you have any things that they need to film or highlight, they're willing to do so, but that's what this contract is for.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Motion second is made by Mr. Adams and Mr. Mary Boy. Last year, we had, or the year before, I think it's last year, we paid about thirty-two thousand dollars.
Thirty, yes, correct.
Thirty thousand. And that seems to be as only maybe five, ten, ten minutes of our exposure being aired. What's the plan on this one?
So this one's kind of optional on here. They, they provide with this new contract, they'll do twenty-six thirty-second commercial. So we can take, you know, twenty-six of those thirty-second commercials, and they will air it for us. And so I think one of them, if we partnership with, say, for example, vaccine distribution, there's opportunities there. Think we can use, utilize them a little bit better. But on this, this also gives us a dedicated thirty-second spot of time. Last year, they came out, kind of like you had mentioned, for the episodes, which cost a little bit more. Those episodes, we did several of them. I know Commissioner Adams was involved with one. Both you, Commissioner- Both you commissioners independently, we're also involved in one with water, roads, kind of the agricultural effects here. And so, we actually, when you look at overall what they did for us last year, they did a lot more. But we do need to come up with a plan of where we want to use it next year.
Mac?
Yeah.
So, actually, the county is benefiting from this expenditure, right?
Correct. They're like our marketing. They would be one of our marketing agents. A lot of it, if you read back through the history of time and this contract... Originally, when we established this contract with this company and this vendor, we were having a really hard time getting information out to the public. And we use them as a source, a resource, to communicate what's going on with the county to the public. And that's what we can continue to use them for.
Okay. Just from my understanding, can you outline those benefits that we're getting up of the county?
Okay.
Have a comment?
All right, sir.
Every Saturday night and every Sunday morning, they have a program on Channel 4 on TV where they air a different program from one of the counties in the state. And along with these programs that they air, they have commercials that highlight counties. And every... Nearly every episode has one of the commercials highlighting something about San Juan County. At least when I've watched, it seems like one of the San Juan County commercials is on the program on nearly a weekly basis. So, I think it has some value.
Yeah. I'd like to see what kind of benefits that we've received.
Okay. This next year, we can chart that out.
I think... Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think we were kind of highlighted only times when we were talking about the roads and also the water rights, the water settlement. And other than that, we're kind of out of the whole picture. And I'm looking at the amount of money that we're talking about, and that's a lot of money. Recently, we denied a pay raise. And at the same time, some of our departments are still struggling with some fundings. I don't know with this pandemic and everything. I don't know what your feels are, Mr. Chair, but commissioners, but I feel that it's a little bit too mature to be putting out that much money for something in the midst of what we're all going through.
Mr. Chair, Maryboy, this money all comes out of tourism money that has to be used for advertising. It's not money that we could use to give other people raises. We have to use this money for some kind of advertising because of the TRT and TRCC money that we use. So, if we don't use it to support Chadwick Booth &amp; Company, we'll have to spend it on billboards or some other way to advertise the county. And I think this, you know, is pretty expensive money for getting some TV advertising. If you want to try to go buy a 30-second spot on TV for advertising, you're certainly not going to get any advertising for $15,000 or $17,000.
Okay.
Well, all I know is this particular show does not advertise for Navajo or any businesses on the reservation. So, it's still a lot of money. But it's you guys call.
Yeah, that's one of the things, just to highlight and go back with what Commissioner Adams said. We do have that requirement to spend 30% of our TRT funds towards marketing itself. And so, if this next year, one of the things that we can do, if that's where you want to go towards, we can definitely start highlighting businesses. They're willing to work with us. There's nothing that's set in the contract that says that we can't adjust or highlight certain businesses throughout the county or even highlight certain... So, because of that TRT requirement, this does meet that obligation. We can highlight whatever throughout the year.
All right. I think we can have them squeeze some time for San Juan County, kind of development into this summer.
Correct. And we would use the TRT board as well for highlight projects that we want, Chadwick to highlight throughout the year.
I know that the producer of the show told me one of the most-watched shows they'd ever produced was the show when they were riding with Kenneth Maryboy down on the dirt road on the reservation, highlighting what schoolchildren have to do to get to school on a dirt road in San Juan County. So, they were pretty excited to do that show, and it was one of the most-watched shows of the whole year.
I think, Mac, if you could maybe look at some of the items. I know that the businesses, our local small businesses in Blanding and Monticello, they're struggling with their businesses.
Yeah.
If we can recognize some of those and start, you know, maybe some big billboards or something, some advertisements. And there's some Navajo businesses out there as well, and they're all on the San Juan County. If we could recognize some of those and do that, and I think, to me, that would be very beneficial. Right now, we're just throwing money into the darkness and who's on the other side. And of course, the show's on the other side. They're the only one that's benefiting greater. And all the counties are doing that. And we're pumping a lot of money into one person. And somewhere, somehow, you know, one-day show of me out there on a bumpy road, on a bus route, that's fine and dandy. But if you could look at the... If you could put it aside to the other television commercials, and those are coming back on and on and on. And then, the rest of it, it shows them fishing and boating somewhere else in the lakes and not a whole lot of what we do here and what's going on with us. And I think it's going to be more beneficial that way than just a one-shot deal and pumping $17,000 to $30,000 in one show. And there's 29 counties. And just imagine that, if you could add all that up.
They do commercials on every show they produce every week. And some of those commercials are about San Juan County and what we have to offer to the visiting public. So, it's more than one show one week. It's multiple advertisements that are done in conjunction with their show every week for the whole year.
I rarely watch it, but I know when I watch it, it's always a one-site. People are doing things out there, and people have things going on. And the only time we get popular is when Bear's Ears National Mining comes on. And most of the anti's are pretty much more impacted in the show than anybody else. And those of us that are pro, we never get to be on the show. So, it's an anti-driven type of program from what I see. So, I don't know, Mac.
So, just looking at their website, they... This last... So, on... I'm looking at January 12. They did a Navajo hardship relief drive. So, even on their website, they're showing a lot more than probably what we're realizing that they're doing. I mean, they highlight just our mountain biking, our trails throughout the county. But then, where they did the roads, they did the water segment up on Navajo Mountain with the Nahuas.
Puyute Mesa.
Yeah, and Puyute Mesa. And then, just even looking at that Navajo hardship relief drive, we didn't ask them to do that. They just... They did a segment on their own to help, it looks like. And so, they're out there doing things. And I think it's just, maybe we just need to be better about reporting back, maybe quarterly or semi-annually of what their efforts are in the county so that we fully understand and help shape and drive what they're targeting and what they're segmenting on there. But they're helping out, from what I can tell.
I've never... I've watched almost every week. I've never seen them do one show that was anti-Bear's Ears or anti-Navajo people.
I've seen it, and I think I got popular with the county seat when I was asked to protest with the Red Rock Mining. Other than that, it's... You know, telling... Hearing some of the things that they do and some of the things that they've done. I need you to compile some information on what they do for San Juan County, Utah, San Juan County, and also Navajos. You just barely mentioned Navajo Mountain. Okay. We have some issues and concerns, especially with the oil companies right now. Those are some of the things that the people are trying hard to outreach to those that can hear us. If I can... If you can show me that they can do, and they're doing those things, I might reconsider this thing. But in the meanwhile, what I like to do is I'm going to make a motion to table this item and give me those details informed. So, that way, maybe the next meeting, you can put it back on the agenda and make some adjustments because we need to be heard.
Yeah.
As Utah Navajos and San Juan County people because you hear it every day that Monticello and Blanding, the small businesses, they're struggling. So, how do we work with these people and also the companies on the reservations? And these things, nobody's willing to come out to make a story. And we need to be heard. So, if they can show me that they are here to make things right, then by all means, I'll be out there advocating for more money for these guys if they can go and do something for us. So, with that, I would like to make that motion to see if I can table this and bring it back until the next or the following meeting, if I can get those informations.
You can go online and see what they've done. I know they went all the way to Window Rock one time and did a complete show from right in front of Window Rock, talking about all the needs of the Utah Navajos and how things work from Window Rock when it comes to the needs of Utah Navajos. I think they've been... You know, if you want to go online and just pull up county seat, you can see a replay of shows they've done for the last several years. And you'll find that they've done a lot of shows on water tanks.
No agreement. This one here is the Navajo-Utah Water Rights.
Yeah, Navajo-Utah Water Rights Settlement, 2019. They've done a lot of shows about the needs of Utah Navajos in San Juan County. You just have to Google county seat on your search engine, and it'll bring up a lot of the programs that they've done.
Motion is made by Mr. Maryboy. Table and bring it back later.
I have made a motion to approve the request somewhere shortly after this. So, I'm not sure where we are in the motion process.
What was that again, Mr. Adams?
I made a motion to approve the request about 10, 15 minutes ago.
Oh, there's another motion. I believe it's Maryboy. Is that correct?
I made a motion prior to Mr. Maryboy's motion, so I don't know what you want to do.
Mr. Maryboy?
Mr. Chair, a motion can be made anytime for the discussion.
Yes, I understand that.
And then, it's your call to ask for the final vote as those were...
Was there a substitute motion you made?
In the meanwhile, I can make an amended motion to either table or call for the question.
Substitute motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And with that, call for the question. I will go ahead in a second. Mr. Maryboy's motion? So, call for the question? All those in favor? Aye? Oppose?
No.
Two in favor? One opposed? Person cares?
Okay, so I'll bring that back next commission meeting. I'll do a little research for you and have kind of a list of what they've done.
Thank you. Next?
That was...
Commissioner report? Anyone?
I'll make a report. I, I attend meetings on the state level and on the regional level, and all of my meetings that I attend are virtual. I do not travel to them, I do not leave town. I attend them on my video screen, just like we are today. So, um, I continue to, uh, attend legislative meetings, participate in confirmation hearings. Everything I do is virtual. I don't, I don't travel to Salt Lake to do these meetings.
Very good. Yeah. All right. Mr. Maryboy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Just like what Mr. Adam has, Commissioner Adam has mentioned, I, I, I don't travel, I haven't traveled yet. And, uh, I've been attending some other meetings, um, out here as well. And, uh, one of the biggest thing on the reservation is, of course, um, the, uh, the pandemic and, and the neighboring, uh, people. And sadly to say that, our former chairman, Albert Hale, has, uh, passed away as well due to the COVID. And some of these things are happening, and, uh, again, meeting and contacting with the families and relatives is, is in the same, same matter. So we will continue to be doing that, and we will continue to, uh, do what we can. So with that, that's the extent of my report with the chairman, and thank you very much, and welcome back.
Oh. Yeah, I'm just recovering day to day. Being quarantined, uh, seems like, uh, the sun comes up, sun goes down. And, uh, the feelings, uh, strength changes every now and then. Sometimes I get real good, uh, my strength are back. And other times, I, I have to, uh, get back down and get my rest though. I believe I can overcome the situation. Oh. You hear God, he's born. He did overlook in the shadow, oh, oh, so, uh, put in the hands and lower, got the eyes, so. I don't think you can go wrong with it, anyway. So appreciate, uh, you welcoming back, and thank you. I'll be okay. I'll go now. That's it, Mr. McDonald.
That is it? All we need is a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Motion to adjourn made by Mr. Maryboy. There's a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Adams. Any question? There's none, elders in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we're adjourned at 12:34.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Can we use your stamp, Commissioner Drys?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.